Are we starting?
Hold on.
Hold on. Whoa. The clerk left.
Where if it's a working. Where if like somebody played me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look, see? We all. The memo was that we're in the red family today. We have the pink and the.
All meeting to order, uh, Mr. Lot has pledged.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll. Here.
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zarinsky.
Here.
Mr. Kuzic?
Present.
Mr., Ms. Ferraro.
Here.
And Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 6th?
Sooner.
Okay, Ms. Shefnisky, you take your pick of whoever used the voice you heard. And then you can take the next one you heard is the second. All right.
Wow.
All in favors, must say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Now, next order of business is, uh, we have a proclamation to be read. And Ms. Zarinsky, would you read your proclamation?
Sure. It's sunshine week. So the proclamation says, uh, whereas James Madison, the father of our federal constitution, wrote that consent of the governed requires that the people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives. And whereas every citizen in our participatory democracy has an inherent right to access to government meetings and public records. And whereas an open and accessible government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence in their government and in the government's ability to effectively serve its citizens. And whereas the protection of every person's right of access to public records and government meetings is a high priority of Northampton County. And whereas Northampton County is committed to openness and transparency in all aspects of its operations and seeks to set a standard in this regard. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved that Northampton County Council in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania does hereby proclaim March 15th through the 21st, 2020, as sunshine week throughout Northampton County.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, now we'll go to courtesy of the floor. Anyone who would like to speak? Oh, seeing no one. County Executive Report, Ms. McClure.
I'll try and drag this out. Good, good evening, uh, council. First, a report based on a query made during the Human Services Committee meeting. We have identified at least three of the new hires that were referred out of the employee referral program. We think there'll be more, uh, coming up and we'll, Sue will update you as she gets that information. Uh, council, as you know, you've been doing a lot. This administration has been doing a great deal, uh, moving this county forward into the future in a competent fashion. And one of the things we did almost immediately upon taking office was fix the healthcare for our employees. Um, they have a much better healthcare plan, plans actually, than they had when we arrived. But as you know, that costs money, right? Um, and healthcare is not going down, it continues to go up. But I have some really terrific news in that regard. And while this will not completely offset the increases in the future, Teladoc had its best month in January of 2020. We saved sixty-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars in Teladoc just in January. Now, to provide some additional context for that, forty-two percent of those people who use Teladoc in January would have gone either to the emergency room. Have you gotten an emergency room, Bill, lately? Or, uh, urgent care? Think about that. If, if these trends continue, it will help offset some of our healthcare increases. So, um, we remain very, very proud of, of the fact that we're working Teladoc. And just so, uh, you can have some broader context, thus far, in the 21 months that we've been utilizing Teladoc, we have saved eight-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars. Teladoc has cost us ninety-four-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars. We have saved, this is the total we've saved total Teladoc, seven-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twelve dollars and eighty cents. This small change is making a big difference for us. Uh, Mr. Kuzic, the fourth quarter, uh, financial reports are done and online. You'll be able to see it tonight when you go home. Uh, Mr. Mr. Baron wanted to make sure that although he did not keep his promise to you, that you were aware of that. Um, you know, council, when we arrived here, aging was in the red. And I think you heard a great report about that earlier tonight in Human Services. Age, age, we were failing our most vulnerable senior citizens. And when we got here, I came up here and I said, that was absolutely unacceptable. And what we did was completely change the leadership in aging. It took time for them to learn, adapt, and adjust in their roles at aging. But now, our most vulnerable seniors are being very well taken care of and we're in the green. We went from failing to being in the green, changing the leadership, and that's, that's a credit to you for supporting us to take that bold action. Council, when we took office, 911, right? This is a core responsibility of ours, 911. When we took office, we were down twenty telecommunicators and supervisors. That means mandation, right? And we know how popular mandation is throughout the county workforce. Mandation and overtime and the possibility that folks' calls for emergent services are taking longer to connect them with the people who are going to save their lives, right? We were down twenty when we ta- I am happy to tell you, we are fully staffed at 911 now. We are fully staffed. And this is not just, we were down twenty, we hired. Remember, during this time period, and I have to commend Mr. Dirtinger, um, he led us through the 911 consolidation. It was a big deal that we had to, we had to subsume the 911 responsibilities of the city, uh, the city of Bethlehem because the state would no longer pay for it. So, not only were we filling positions that were already vacant before the consolidation, we filled them after the consolidation. This is a huge deal. And, uh, I am just very pleased with Mr. Weaver. Again, uh, can't, uh, thank Mr. Dirtinger enough for everything he's done, but we're fully staffed at 911 for the first time in a very long time. The prison, when we came here, council, and thank you for your support on these issues, we came here, the prison was running at about a hundred and eighty-four corrections officers. The budget was for two-hundred-and-twelve. As you can imagine, that's a great deal of overtime. Well, I had a meeting with Director Castor, as I regularly do, and he was telling me that he's starting to hear a little bit of, um, agitation for overtime. So, where's my overtime? So when you're hearing that, that, that's my unscientific, uh, ringing bell to tell me we're probably pretty well staffed. But, um, we are within three or four corrections officers of being fully staffed now at the prison at any given time. And that is a credit to the administration at the prison, and that is a credit to you for all the support you've been giving us. Uh, council, it might not surprise you to learn that I used the money and the authorization you gave me to purchase poll books. Um, I did that, uh, the day after the last meeting. And I am pleased to report to you that the first shipment of the poll books will be arriving on March 20th. So that, uh, it's a small shipment, but a shipment of enough poll books that will, uh, allow Ms. Cozy to begin the very important tr- training of the poll workers on the poll books. And, uh, we'll have additional reports for you as, as that stuff, uh, continues to move forward. But if you don't have any, uh, questions for me, that will conclude my report.
Anything at the moment? Um, Ms. Zarinsky and then Mr. Lot.
Um, I just wanted to follow up on the, uh, voting machines and how, uh, is ESNS working to, um, mitigate their quality assurance issues and then also train our poll workers on the machines? I know that the, the machines have gone on tour. Has that been successful at all? Are people going?
Yes, I, uh, so, uh, we've had them at the openings of the senior centers. And most of the seniors at the centers have been, uh, taking the opportunity to cast their mock votes on the machines. I can't speak to what ESNS is doing on its quality assurance, um, and maybe.
Don't they report to you at all? Don't they report?
Well, I, but we're not really inquiring as to what they're doing in their factories and, and on their floors. Um, we're more interested in making sure that the stuff we have works. And I do know that Ms. Cozy is in constant contact, uh, with ESNS, pretty much on a daily basis, check in to see how things are going. So, um, they're, they're paying a lot of attention to Northampton County.
Okay.
Mr. 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 Lot?
Yeah, so the Teladoc, I just wanted to comment on that and ask a question. First, can you get, do they, can they do prescriptions over the Teladoc?
Yes.
That's awesome. We, we instituted that and we found, we, we found with our insurance fund, I, same results. And I, I use it not because it saves my employer money, which is a great thing.
Right.
But because it's so convenient. So that's, you know, kudos to you guys for, for looking at that and.
Thanks, and, and we are, we're constantly looking for other ways to save money. And we may have a plan for you in the very near future about that.
Smart. You have any date, kind of date for the rest of the ebooks to show up?
Yes, there are, uh, shipment dates. I did not commit them to memory, nor did I write them down. But they'll be by, I think the, could, the conclusion of the, of the shipments is sometime in early April.
Okay, thank you.
Um, anyone else? Uh, is it Teladoc? Do you think that system would be viable for the retiree population possibly? Because I know those costs go up too.
Mr. Baron and I have had that conversation. I've asked him to talk to the consultant about PSI, about the potential, it, it's about paying for it, right?
I understand.
It's about who pays for it.
But I mean, based on what you're giving this report with the savings versus the cost.
Right.
It, it's just something I was wondering, if, if it's even feasible.
I think it's, I think it's probably a good question for the retirement report.
But I just wondered if that, thank you. Uh, any, anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we'll go to old business. And, uh, we'll start with, uh, public hearing on the ordinance entitled, an ordinance establishing a bi-county partnership between the county of Monroe and the county of Northampton to advance the Liberty Water Gap Trail in Pennsylvania. Uh, this ordinance was introduced by Ms. Zarinsky and Ms. Vargo Hefner at our February 6th meeting. Are there any questions or comments from public? Seeing none, discussion, questions?
Just a procedural question. We're, we're voting to adopt an ordinance, and then under new business, we have consideration of an addendum to the ordinance. Um, could we please explain how those are related and why we have two separate ones?
I'm going to punt that to Ms. Zarinsky, since they're both yours.
I think because in the addendum, it talks about the, the funding. Addendum one, phase two corridor analysis, and then whereas participating county will need to commit fifty thousand cash match to the DWG NRA funding. And it is just a little bit more of the partnership. I think we needed to know what Monroe County was going to do so that we could have this addendum. And maybe Brian Cope should have spoke more about that in his presentation.
Mr. Kuzic?
I guess my question then is, uh, an ordinance isn't, um, it, it doesn't take effect, I believe, what is it, thirty days?
Right.
So, I guess my question then is, would the, and maybe I'm getting ahead of ourselves, but is the resolution for the addendum, uh, I'm, I don't know what the legal term is, is it ripe, I guess? It might be the.
The resolution, yeah, the resolution refers to the ordinance. The ordinance would have to be passed first, but it, the, um, it's more or less only talking about that financial portion, which we need to know. And if you would basically delay this another month, that would delay this another, or delay it a few weeks, that would delay everything that they have in line. Like, the way, uh, Brian explained it, they have everything lined up so that this ordinance passes tonight.
If I may, I, I read this, and I read both of them, and I saw, and I, I was wondering, but, but I, I'm getting the sense from reading it myself that the enabling ordinance, the law, if you will, you know, the law was necessary, and, and then once the law is passed, and I, now we're getting that thirty days thing. The, the resolution will allow us. Now, was it, is it appropriate or proper to do the resolution now? Or should it be, be, be pushed forward? I would defer to, I, I didn't think it would create an issue, but I would defer to the solicitor if it's somehow out of bounds.
It, again, it, my question is, it just seems unusual to me that we're, we're, and I'm in favor of both of these, don't get me wrong, but from a procedural standpoint, we're adopting an or, we're voting to adopt an ordinance, and it doesn't take effect for thirty days, and then we're voting on, uh, an addendum to it before it takes effect. I'm not sure how.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Hefner.
It appears that in the addendum, it speaks to the fact that Monroe County has accepted and is matching, so they can't match something that doesn't exist. So it appears that we would have to create our ordinance to say we're doing it, and then we can accept the addendum to accept the partnership and the money. That's how I'm reading it. I'm a lawyer.
But you know what? And I saw this was put on, and I read through it, but, like, the wording, and, and, you know, if it's a resolution that's just saying, okay, now we, we're going to have this ordinance and we, we haven't enacted to get money. But it, it, it's specifically saying an addendum to the ordinance, which now that, that does, in, in speaking to the solicitor, the addendum part does throw something. Because if you're going to make an amendment to an ordinance, we're going to have to go through the process, and it's not the resolution process. So I don't know.
The, the.
I thought this was a straight resolution.
It's not an amendment to the ordinance. It's a resolution establishing the partnership, referring to the partnership. The partnership is established here, and then the addendum refers to that partnership, and you can't refer to something that hasn't been established yet, so you need the ordinance to establish that. So procedurally, this does make sense because you can't put the chicken before the egg.
But if the chicken, if the chicken needs, uh.
That's what I tried to explain.
A two-meeting incubation period, so does the egg need a two, two-meeting incubation period? I'm not against it, as Mr., but, but it is bringing up a, a procedural concern. And, I mean, the solicitor's looking at it.
This establishes the partnership. The resolution then says that we.
I think everyone understands that.
But then we agreed to move forward with the recommendations, the priorities in hiring the professionals, and the actual implementation of what the partnership establishes.
I, I think, I think, and I think everybody has that. I think it's, it's the wording. Uh, how do you read this, Mr. Solicitor?
If I could weigh in, I'm, I'm sensitive to Mr. Kuzic's concern. Because when I look at the, the agenda, the new business would be an ordinance. When you look at the document itself, it's a resolution.
And I looked at the document itself, but I see where the wording, you say addendum to, and maybe this is just, I don't know if we're, are we splitting hairs on wording? Uh, I know what she wants to do. I think everybody knows what you want to do.
I would, I would think that the, my, my suggestion.
You just want to do it legally.
The board would be appropriate for this regard, is to consider the old business as an ordinance, and new business would be one as a resolution, as it is titled.
Yes.
All right.
The agenda is incorrect in that regard. It lists as an ordinance, you have to have a hearing, and I would suspect as we move ahead and with Mr. Kuzic's concerns, there may be other addenda, other resolutions to the ordinance.
I thought, okay, I thought we did have a, a hearing to this ordinance already.
But, but you brought up something different, which is not exactly the ordinance that was put on the table. And it's titled an addendum to.
In the, in the resolution.
But, that's the point.
I see what you're saying now.
That's the point. So, we just want to be sure that we cross the T and dot to I. I know that can sometimes be procedurally awkward, but we're a legislative body and we're awkward by nature.
So the final word would be is, I would suggest that you consider the ordinance.
Yes.
And you consider the resolution under new business.
Yeah.
But it just moved down on the agenda.
Yeah, so, I mean, I.
Second part goes down.
What, yeah, I.
So we're just going to procedurally reevaluate this and move it forward.
But here's what we're going to do.
That's the word, council.
Listening to it, unless council, unless there's a specific objection, we're going to have our public hearing and vote on this ordinance. Under new business, there is a resolution.
Right.
Which involves this ordinance, but it is a standalone resolution that refers to the ordinance. And in that sense, we certainly can consider it and vote on it.
Okay.
I'm sorry if this sounds, I'm, I'm getting in weeds that sometimes council has to get into if we don't want problems. Mr. Kuzic, how does that sound to you?
Again, I'm, I'm in favor of.
Please don't split more hairs.
I'm, I'm in favor of both of these. It's just that the way that the, the timing has been arranged doesn't make sense to me. But if you want to proceed, that's fine. I support them both.
Let us proceed then, huh?
We've got to be sure. Pardon me? I'm looking at, I'm going over this with, with the clerk.
Okay.
All right, uh, did you have something you wanted to say, Mr.? Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something you wanted to say, Mr. Lot? I thought I saw some hands flying.
Nope.
All right.
Good.
So what we're going to do is, barring any, any legal action being taken against us, we're going to have the public hearing on this ordinance. And, uh, we'll do that, and then we will discuss the resolution as it stands as a resolution. And if there's any problems with that, we'll address that when we do that. So, any questions or discussion or anything on this public ordinance beyond what Mr. Kuzic raised?
No.
Seeing none, call for the vote?
Ms. Zarinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yep.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Peg? Peg, are you there? Peg?
Yes, he's still there.
Peg, all right.
She's having some dinner.
All right, ordinance adopted in, uh, April.
Got it.
She's trying.
All right, let's move on. Uh, is there any other old business? Seeing none, we'll move to new business.
Now we do the ordinance, now we do the resolution.
The resolution.
Now we will move on to number one, which is consideration of a resolution. Regar- establishing a, uh, regarding the, uh, I won't even read it. Uh, basically, it's the resolution that, as you said.
Establishes the terms of the intergovernmental agreement.
Yes, would you please introduce your resolution?
I'll read the now, therefore, now.
Sure.
Now, therefore, be it resolved, the partnership will work cooperatively, one, to advance agreed-upon recommendations and priorities, two, provide guidance, technical assistance, and project management, management to the alliance, three, hire professional services to conduct the surveys, title search, and appraisals of the parcels, and right-of-way that needs acquisition or easement and valuations to estimate acquisition costs, four, conduct the planning, design, and engineering related to each section, and coordinate with all appropriate federal, state, and local agencies, five, conjunct- applicable engineering services for valuations of estimate, trail development costs, and include prepared plans as needed, six, contribute additional funding in each respective county's boundary as applicable, seven, comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, eight, determine the part, partnership led to issue applicable professional service requests for proposals, contracts, invoices, and payment schedules, nine, develop of RFPs, contracts, selections of professional services, project implement, implementation, and provide payments for work conducted respective in the county boundary, ten, ensure the agreed-upon scope of work has been completed by professional service contractors mutually approved, invoices and comply with agreed-upon invoicing and/or payment process. Eleven, coordinate with the appropriate municipalities in the alliance to formally adopt the preferred trail alignment in the corridor analysis by ordinance, twelve, each respective county can conduct the applicable acquisition and easements to secure the right-of-way for the trail as needed by the appropriate entity. Now, therefore, be further resolved by the Northampton County Council, one, executes this agreement as of the date of the last signature and shall be in effect for a full period of not to exceed five years, at which time it will be subject to review, renewal, revision, and expiration. Further, the Northampton County Executive, through the Office of the Program and Administration of the Division of Parks and Recreation or Designee, is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations. Three, the Northampton County Council authorizes the Northampton County Executive to sign the addendum one. Further, the partnership may only withdraw from this agreement at the end of the initial agreement period of any renewal term. At least sixty days notice of intent to withdraw must be presented in writing to the participating counties. Four, the county of Northampton authorizes this agreement may be simultaneously executed in several counterparts, each of which so executed shall be deemed to be an original, and such counterparts, each of which so execution, executed shall be deemed to be an original, together shall constitute by one and the same instrument.
Okay.
So be it, right?
I, I would say that, uh, I saw the, the original document from Mr., um, Cope, and I believe he, he put this together, presented it to us.
Right.
And it does say this, um, about the addendum. Um, and there are, as time goes on, there's going to be other projects.
Yeah.
Um, so, I, I could see where there could be some confusion because it sounds like it's a run-on ordinance, and we don't have run-on ordinances. So, I mean, as discussing this with the solicitor, we're doing this, it's, it's a resolution that relates to the ordinance that we just passed.
Right.
But the idea that we can constantly amend the ordinance on an ongoing basis with a resolution, we can't do that. Does that make any sense?
I understand what you're saying.
All right. We have, Mr. McGee?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, um, other than the, uh, the Squidner's error on the, on the agenda, I think everything else was all in order.
Yeah.
And, um, also, I think, uh, that the, I make, make a comment on all the hard work that actually went into this county, bi-county agreement. I mean, that's tough when you've got two counties and working together, and all the hard work that went through it, I think it's very important, so.
Yes, it's a time.
Just a comment.
It's a timing issue.
Absolutely. Any other comments, concerns? I, I, and I do, I think that this is more, when we, when we do these things, particularly ordinances, we want to be sure because at any time, somebody could walk in, and the last thing, and I know from some former council members sitting out there, is just for, just for fun, somebody could decide to say, you know what, we're going to go after this because they didn't do this proper. And we, we may be right, but then we've got to wade through some attorneys to get to that same point, and we don't want to wade through attorneys. So, at least I don't, I don't. Somebody else wants to wade through attorneys. Anything else?
Yeah, again, I'm, I'm just reading through the ordinance and, and, um, item number eight, um, says by act of this agreement, council authorizes the county executive to sign and execute addendums to this agreement for the partnership, you know, et cetera. Um, so, contained within the ordinance, uh, it is expected that there will be additional addendums, uh, and it says funding commendments, uh, funding commitments to be adopted by resolution. So, um, certainly the ordinance, uh, did anticipate addendums. And, again, my only concern is, is the thirty days, that this officially won't be enacted, and we're already, um, a- adding an addendum to it, so.
I do wish you would have asked these questions during the energy environment and the meetings, especially if you had questions on this procedure, because Brian Cope probably would have been able to answer why this is the way it is. But the reason why I think it is the way it is, is because this is a partnership agreement on a project that establishes the need for these RFPs. We have to mutually agree upon different things, and that's why the executive is given the opportunity to sign for them. This is, this is like almost any other project that is brought forward, it's just that it's complicated a bit because it is bi-county. And we have participating and cooperating, uh, entities in this alliance that we have to coordinate with. And so there has to be some degree of flexibility to be able to amend this ordinance, even though the ordinance establishes the partnership. We still establish the partnership. We still establish the partnership, but we have to be able to agree on the terms.
Again, and I guess my question is, why can't we wait 30 days until the ordinance becomes law, and then do the addendum? Again, I'm totally in favor of what's being proposed here. My concern is just one of timing, that's all.
I think it won't matter if we wait 30 days or 30 more days. This has to be established now.
To his point, it matters, but, to his point, it matters, but we've had this discussion, and in speaking to the solicitor, I'm ruling that we go ahead on the vote. Now, having said that, I think it's important, especially with these types of things, that if somebody is presenting this as they wrote it, and they want us, and you ultimately are putting your name to it, so you want to be sure, not how somebody who's out there says this is the best way to go about it. We need to run things past our solicitor, especially if it's in an area where we think it might be tricky, and don't just accept what we're being told. I think that's the point here. Because if it's a timing error, and that he can look at it then independently, that's why we pay him to work for us. And then he can raise a concern if he thinks from our end there's a concern. But based on everything I've heard, I'm going to move that, we go ahead with it. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Zerinski.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Ms. Ferraro.
Peg? Peg? Peggy?
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Resolution adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. All right.
Peg did not vote, would it not be seven to zero? Did Peg vote?
There's eight of us here.
There's nine of us.
Oh, you're right, okay. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure. Jesus.
Hey, guy, I
Oh, there she is.
She just voted on it.
All right, we'll
Can it vote now?
Yeah.
No, it is not.
Peg, that's been noted. Okay, now, moving on to number two, considerate, excuse me, consideration of Article 13 contract resolutions, CMR Construction, Inc., Carroll Engineering Cooperation, yeah, and Corporation, Corporation, and Vision Technologies. We'll start with CMR Construction, and that's Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Okay, this was discussed last night at Finance Committee, now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached document to approve a contract with CMR Construction, Inc. for additional 25 LF of concrete to provide protection of existing concrete footing that is exposed, and the installation of additional 90 LF of seven dash, R dash seven riprap along the existing stack rock and precast concrete block wall.
Thank you.
Riprap.
Discussion, questions?
What the hell is riprap?
Sounded self-descriptive, but seeing none, we'll call for the vote.
Ms. Ferraro Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Adopted nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next we have Carroll Engineering, Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Carroll Engineering Corporation for A&E Services for replacement of Bridge 225.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Adopted nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, Vision Technologies, Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Vision Technologies for hardware for software refresh.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Okay, call for the vote, please.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Zerinski.
Yes.
Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Does any council members have any other new business to discuss?
No.
I just have one question for Mr. Dertinger. When the sign went on, and I had to quick-start the meeting, when are we going to be able to watch this on TV? People ask me that, I mean, the recordings. The Silver Light doesn't work, and I did check, because I don't want people to say stuff that isn't true. So I went on YouTube, because we have a channel for YouTube, and all it shows was Ms. Hess's, I'm not Ms. Hess, Ms. Cozy's presentation to us, it doesn't show the meetings. Now, if there's a place we're supposed to go, I mean, these guys, we've got to get this out there.
If you go on the county website, the meetings are posted. No, 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 hold on. The meetings are posted. You can watch them if you're using Microsoft Explorer. They're right there. The Silver Light plugin has been discontinued. We are working with Sire, who we have a contract with, to make that, to make that plugin work on other web browsers. We are migrating over to the YouTube channel, but we need to make sure the technology in the room, we have been parallel testing it, we need to make sure the technology in the room works before we do that, because we do not want to lose any meetings that have previously been recorded. I have also directed Bob to take all of the meetings that have been recorded in this room, and then upload them to the YouTube channel when we are able to do that, and that does take time, because there are a lot of videos that are rather large, because some meetings last three and four hours. We also need to make sure that our YouTube channel allows videos longer than 10 minutes, because YouTube does have restrictions on how long a video can be, unless we are a government or a commercial entity publishing them for the public to view.
All right, so
Because we don't have the regular YouTube channel that any kid can just sign up for.
Okay, so out of that, then, two questions. So if I say, you can go on right now on the county website, where it says county council meetings, and you click on that, and it says video, and that's clicked on, it's going to show the meeting, it's not going to say you don't have this plugged into your computer?
Yes, it should.
Okay.
It should, and like I said, I can't vouch for every end user, but I have no problem from home, I have no problem here from the office. The only thing you can't do is watch it on your phone, and that's why we want to do the YouTube.
And I'm not, I don't want to be difficult, but I mean, we brought these folks in with Fanfare, we let the other people left, and I remember the two men coming in, and they were going to recreate the internet almost for us and our technology.
This has nothing to do with vision, this problem existed well before vision, with the Sire software. Silver Light has been in existence, and the Sire system has been in existence since this room has been wired for video.
Right, but not everybody still has Commodore computers. I mean, the point I'm making is
I understand.
The point I'm making is, if you have a newer version of Windows, you do not, you're not able to get the Sire, the Sire. That's all I'm saying, and I, look, you're giving me a good answer, don't get me wrong, I'm not, I don't want to, you know, Steve, I love Steve. I'm not coming down on you, Steve. I'm coming down on the tech guys, because just like when we do the things, it's not for you to explain how they can't do things, it's for them to explain how they're going to get the thing fixed, so people can watch this stuff. I don't need the Google de gawk about the whole Bill Gates discussion. Fix the thing, so somebody can go on a computer and watch it, and then tell us where to go.
And Mr. Heckman, it's on
And no more excuses.
It's on the web.
It's that simple.
It is on the web. I have Windows 10 on my personal computer
Right, so do I.
That I have in my bag now, and I have Windows 10 on my work computer, which is the newest version. They work, I can see the videos, I've actually pulled a video from the website, and
So tonight's meeting will be up, I have Windows 10, so I can go to anybody who brings this up to me, and tell them you're full of baloney, because myself and Steve, I mean the North
And if you have problems with Windows 10, I live a block and a half away.
No, 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 no.
I'll be happy to come over and do your personal tech support.
That's not in your job description, but I, no, I do, Steve, I, thank you, I just
Whatever browser you're using.
Yes.
Whatever browser you're using, that needs to be clarified.
There is, there is a Silver Light plugin that Sire requires, but you're able to load that plugin. The plugin is there for all the browsers that are there, but it's
No, you can't, not on everything. I tried downloading Silver Light, and other people did, and it doesn't download.
Yeah.
Mr. Byron.
Takes to another site.
Is it still prompting people to get the Silver Light? And I think that's where some of the confusion comes in.
It depends, it depends on what, again, I can't speak for every end user, it depends on what they're using the interface with the Internet.
Because I think sometimes if you get on there, it prompts Silver Light, and then they think they got to do it, you know, in Silver Light.
And the other thing is, you can run a temporary application that will also run the video. You can also select to use Windows Media Player. I've done that as well.
All right. I don't want to prolong the meeting, we just need it to work without any patches or from the, I don't want the resident out there to have to call Tom Giovanni to figure out how to watch a meeting. So anyway, that being said, is there any other new business? Seeing none, let's go to council committee reports.
I have one.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
You go first, I'll go
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Human Services meant before this meeting. We introduced Julie Bader as Kevin Dolan's successor for children and youth. Tomorrow will be Kevin Dolan's going-away celebration at the Human Services Building. If anyone wants to go, what time, cake is at 1:30?
Noon.
It said noon.
There, it says 1:30, but that's okay.
Maybe that's because that's when cake is, but everybody else is supposed to show up at 12 for lunch. We get to get cake.
Go say goodbye to Kevin. And we did a review of Greystale funding structure tonight, which was informative and scary at the same time, so that's, that's that for Human Services.
Thank you. Ms. Zerinski.
We had an Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee meeting where Jim Wilson, Brian Cop, and Sheri Asavito all gave presentations on the important things that happened in 2019, and also on the Monroe-Northampton by-county agreement, so that's all, that's pretty much all we did.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Anybody want to give anything? Seeing none, let's go to liaison. Any liaison reports? Ms. Zerinski.
We had airport board committee reports, I mean, committee meetings today, and as part of the Business Community and General Aviation Committee, we discussed Brayden Airport. I specifically asked what was the relationship with the airport in Brayden, to your concern. Basically, the relationship is very amiable, they're trying to align an outdated document with Forks Township that they've had.